A motion from Vice Mayor Dwayne Ross, Alderman John Etheridge to pay all current bills. With a second from Dwayne Ross, there were four yes votes. Under old business, there was discussion on the contract for high-speed broadband internet service. Mayor advised he doesn't think anyone should put anything on the water tower. There was no further action. Matthew Johnson with Barge Wagner Summer Cannon advised the board on the status of ordered actions by the state. He stated they will need to approach the state in July or August on meeting the deadlines. On the status of the loan, RD still needs to review the engineering report. They're pushing for 55 percent grant, 45 percent loan. John Ratliff with Benefitsync approached the board with the city employees' health insurance. The present plan is increasing 16 percent for the next renewal. After discussion on different options, council agreed to select one of the options to accept by the next meeting. County Commissioner John Hurd approached the board regarding a farmer's market requesting the closure of Bradford Street. The vendors will set up in the street with parking in the Church of Christ parking lot. Mr. Hurd advised it should be ready to start in May on Fridays from 12:00 to 6:00 p.m. There was no further action. With no further business, the meeting adjourned at 6:40 p.m. with a motion from Vice Mayor Dwayne Ross and a second from Alderman John Etheridge.
Call in favor?
I make a motion, Ms. Stan.
Approve.
Say it.
Just two of them. All in favor? Motion passed. Motion to pay the bills.
Motion. Say it.
All in favor?
Ah.
Motion passed. I hope it's John here.
What I've done, you remember from our last meeting, is we had about three different options from the last meeting that we looked at. I had a suggestion to adjust one of the options a little bit, so now inside your packet are four different options. An option one, and two, and there's a 2A. The only difference with option two and 2A is the way we actually went through and determined the deductions for the employees. And then there's the option three. But just to kind of review from where we were at last time, Humana quote, if you look at, Humana went up about 16 percent. You look at different carriers, everyone pretty much agreed that they wanted to stay with the Humana option because it had worked well, but we wanted to try to adjust different options on the plan. The first option you see there is basically just taking no change to the employees. If you go with that option, you would be looking at basically about a 16 percent increase. It's basically the same thing as you have now, but just with the city basically incurring all the increase. The option two that we looked at last time was changing the way that the deductions are done for the employees. Doing the plan exactly the same, keeping the same current plan, but instead of having everything paid for for the employees and the dependents, the employees' coverage would still be covered at 100 percent. They wouldn't pay for employee-only coverage, but the employees would be responsible to pay 15 percent if they took dependent coverage, 15 percent of the premium. The suggestion on option 2A, and that's what we looked at, option two is what we looked at last time. Option 2A is the same exact plan, but we made a slight change to the adjustment to the way the premiums are determined, how much the employees would pay. If someone took employee-only coverage, they would still not pay anything for it, but then they would get the credit toward their dependent premium. And then at that point, they would pay 15 percent of the difference. So that actually, you got a question on it?
No.
You filed?
Okay.
And so that actually, what that did is kind of split the increase a little bit, where if you look at it, it would make about, it would make the difference to the employees. Their premiums go down quite a bit per pay period, but the cost to the city would go up to about a 7 percent increase at that point, if you did the option on the option 2A. But that does decrease the cost to the employees because they get a little more credit towards their insurance plans for dependent coverage that way.
Now, 2A, we still pay for the individual employee. And if we go with the 2A version, the city would pay 15 percent of anything over that, any coverage beyond individual employee as a start.
The employee, the employee would pay 15 percent.
Permanent. Employee would pay 15 percent over anything above the employee coverage, whether it's a spouse, or children, or family.
That's exactly right. And if you follow it down on that, on 2A, if you follow Colin B. down, you will see it, on the employee-only coverage, four people have, they would pay 612.28, which is the cost for the plan. They, actually, what the city and the county would pay. And then, but if you work it on down, they would get a 612 credit if they were employee and spouse, and then they would pay the different, 15 percent difference. That's how you get to the 9184 per month on the employee spouse premium. And that works out to be 2119 per pay period for the employee, employee spouse.
Now, even doing that, the city's total cost for insurance still goes up 7 percent this year.
That's right. It would go up to $16,872 from 15.8, so it would go up about $1,000 a month, I'm sorry, yeah, $1,000 a month from where you're at right now.
For the same coverage we had last year.
That's right, same exact plan. Then if you look at option three, which we showed last time, this is just a little different way of looking at it. On option three, what we did was, we added a new base plan, which is a little less expensive plan, that has a little higher deductible, a little less co-insurance. The co-insurance goes to 80 to 70 percent, but it would still allow the employee to not pay anything, and the dependents not to pay anything. So it would be a little, much less disruption to the employee. If the employee wanted the better coverage, just like they have this year, they could buy up, pay the difference. It wouldn't be the city's responsibility. The employee would have the choice to buy up to the current plan and pay the difference. And so that, and what that allows to be done there, it actually, again, it gives the employees the ability to cover themselves and their dependents, still, the city to cover them, only have a 5 percent increase. And then if the employees do want that better coverage, they would pay the difference to go up to that plan, the current plan that they have now on option three. So that's, it would be a little less disruption to the employee, and also to the city, a little less expense to the city. It would take about a 5 percent increase if you went to option three.
So the difference between 2A and three really is, the coverage is lessened a little bit for the full plan.
If you look at the difference in the plans, the base plan, your deductible would go from 500 to 1,000. And the co-insurance would go 80, 80 percent to 70 percent. But the out-of-pocket would still remain the same, and the copays are based on the same, actually a little better than the base plan.
That would be under the current plan, under option three. A.
What's it?
That would be under option three, a, the current plan.
Uh.
Under option three.
Yeah, well, that's, you might have better ask me that question.
What was the question? This option three, it comes under the current plan, which is outlined here as a, is that correct?
That's what.
That's current.
That's existing.
That's the existing plan. And then the option B would be the actual base, would become a base plan.
As a, as the one coming, the one we have, including the, what, 16 percent increase or so.
Right, so what would happen is you would have two options. If you went to option three, the employees would have two options, it would be B and C, those would be their options, and that they would choose between those plans.
And B would be, what type of percentage, 5 percent increase?
5 percent increase, that's right.
Either B or C, the one would be a 5 percent increase on the city.
Right, because the city's only contributing to the B plan. If anyone goes to that buy-up plan, they would be, they would pay the difference. Employee would pay the difference to buy up to that buy-up plan.
That would be under C.
That's right.
And this is what they would pay.
Right.
And what that would do would be dropping your deductibles, your co-insurance. That's about the main things, isn't it? The deductible and the co-insurance.
The, the office visit copays kind of, and the specialist's copays change a little bit, they're actually, the office visit copay is a little better on the base plan than it is on the buy-up plan, but then the specialist is a little better on the buy-up, on the base plan, so there are little variance there, but it's.
Five dollars.
Yeah, it kind of washes each other.
Well, I know, and we have provided our employees in times past, provided them full insurance coverage, whether it was a family, spouse, individual, or includes children. We talked about it for, for a pretty good while, about having to share the cost of increases since insurance has gone up so much in times past, that the city can't continue to bear the increases or so. But this Plan B, option three, does.
It allows employees to make their own individual decision, whether they want the better plan, if they want the better plan, then they'll have to pay a portion to the cost of it. Under C. Under B, it's an obligation cost on employees.
Right. It does adjust the deductibles though slightly in the, in the co-insurance, but services or so pretty much stay the same.
It brings our increase down to a 5 percent increase.
Well.
Probably all the first under, for option one, where Plan B is a 16 percent increase.
I've said this for several years, one of these days we're going to have to make a hard decision or so, but this 3B looks interesting to me, in that for one more year we could possibly stave off.
The cost.
The cost for all the employees. Of course, it's going to cost them upfront now with the deductible and the co-insurance. When does our plan year begin, Vicki?
May 1st.
May 1st. So we need to do something to.
We got to act on it tonight.
No, B looks pretty good.
Option 3, B.
That would stave off employees having to contribute for another year, but I think next year, probably the last year, we'll be able to do that. I think at that point, we'll, we'll be looking at something like 2B.
Is that 2A?
2A, right. I think we'll be looking at something more closer to the 2A plan.
That'd be on the lead, to go to option B.
Yeah. I think next year, we're going to have to bite the bullet and start off at least there.
We need to be careful looking at this, starting at the beginning of next year, have the new administration, and see what.
That's fine, yeah, just let me know whenever you all want me to come back out.
In fact, we need to start, I'd like to start maybe in January or August next year.
Or even earlier.
Or maybe, maybe in December.
But the only problem with that is, y'all probably don't know what the rates, roughly, what the rates are going to be until later on in years.
Right, they normally have the renewals out about two months before with Humana, but we can also start looking at other carriers, though. We can, we can definitely start to investigate it at that point and see how things are looking.
I make a motion, we perceive the option three, Plan B, beginning May 1st.
Say it.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Vicki, can you make sure the employees get a copy of that 3B as to what?
I can.
But also tell them to take a look at the.
The.
2.
C.
2, 2A.
Or 2B.
2A, B, because.
B would be the ring.
You know, if we're going to, if everybody's going to share in what these costs are, and that's how the insurance companies get feedback, is when people that go to the hospital start complaining or so. But in the future, option 2A, Plan B, may be something like we will be considering next year.
Barge Wagner here tonight?
Matthew's here somewhere.
Matthew, say hi to Matt here. The, a couple things, the current project that we're working on, the CDG project, continuing on design, talked to community development partners about a week ago, still haven't heard on the change that we have proposed. And there are talks with the state, didn't anticipate it being rejected, but it's just taking time to go through the process. I know the head of CDG that makes that decision, she was out for, I think roughly three weeks due to death in the family, and she, I think she didn't even catch up since then. So we'll continue to push on, just send it to get it worked, and then we'll wrap it up, so.
Still looking good on the schedule on that, to be able to get it done in time to submit for.
The longer, if it goes much longer than, you know, next couple of weeks to get a decision on that additional change, it's going to be tight. So we might have to, we might want to see where we're at, if we don't hear anything in, you know, a week or so, we might need to make a decision on doing something differently to make sure we're done by next year.
Yeah, we need to meet that schedule.
Yep. I think you guys met with Rural Development this morning.
Do you want to recount a quick?
Oh, Vicki gave me a copy of.
We've got two board members, it was, up here, so if you'd like, I'll give you a, hopefully a five-minute rundown or so. USDA, Rural Development, met with the mayor himself today to give us the news on the loan slash grant for the required sewer upgrade system. And they've gone through all your paperwork and all their paperwork, and at this point, it is approved, pending multiple documents to be completed. And you got a copy of, I don't know how many, 26 items or so?
Some of us.
To be, to be followed up with, most of them have not been worked on yet, but some of them have been. Anyway, the breakdown from y'all's engineering estimate was seven, was 7.4 roughly, not including the two CDBGs.
No, I think they're all CDBGs.
Well, I want to talk with you about that. Because they had 7.4, and that was the basis for the estimate, which you probably see there on item two of their report. The loan portion, 3.4, and the grant portion, 3.9. So is that something we need to talk with?
Yes, that's, there was a table that we provided them to share of 1.5 million from CDG, so that was.
And I specifically asked him, I said, does this include that CDBG? And he said, no, so they've got a, we need to talk with them.
Yeah.
Want to talk with them, or we want them to conference call, or what?
I'll call them tomorrow morning, and if we need to follow up with the conference call, then I'll let you know.
All right. But as I said earlier, the breakdown was, for that 7.4, which is going to be changed, had come out of that, was a roughly 55 percent grant, 45 percent loan. And we are planning on using another two CDBGs, which are all grant, which would make the total roughly 8.4 million. And that would be approximately of the total project, 40 percent loan and 60 percent grant at a 2.125 interest rate. And pray that we're locked into that interest rate, so hopefully if the Fed does go up in the next two or three months, we are locked into this low rate. And that amount of money, by the way, is 40 percent of their budget for the whole year. So we've got 40 percent of all the RD money in Tennessee tied up to correct the sewer plan and our flex system.
Now, the, the CDBGs, they said the same thing that they told us before, if they aren't awarded those, then it's the same terms.
Yeah, they would provide additional funds at the same grant loan breakdown rate for any, they call it overreach, but they know if the CDBG aren't available or so, or if Whether it's a design change in the, in the project, or whether it's, whether we don't get the CDBGs. And that's the reason we were talking earlier about trying to get schedule, to get the CDBG done on time, so we can apply for them.
So the next step is to do the rate analysis.
Next step, do the what?
The rate analysis.
Yeah. What, do we do that? The number is still going to be the same, no, well, maybe we need to wait. Jonathan had already done a rate analysis, but we were talking about it. Steve White? Why don't you talk with Jonathan tomorrow? And Vance Hamilton is the boy that's going to be taking over after this job, but he's kind of getting brought up, brought up speed on this job. So Jonathan is the one that made the presentation, and still got a hold of the project until it's, it gets to the completion.
Until completion with the.
I think signing off on the loan, which will be.
And then Vance will take care of that.
Which will be a few months probably down the road, once we get all the paperwork straight, and this question about the, it's going to be the same dollars, it's just that you're showing more in that than should have been.
Right. Okay, yeah, I'll talk to him first thing in the morning, and then I'll get to you guys.
That's, that's pretty much the status on the RD.
Okay. Let's, I think John had.
These ordinances, yeah, the ordinances are the, Richie Blue with our codes, we need to pass these two ordinances in order for her to be able to, we had to adopt two new code books, so that she can continue with her.
Those six, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Our nineteen, those six.
Bump up to 2012.
So now we're going to the 2012 code book. So the building code.
Is this the property maintenance?
Yes.
281, and what's the, on 282? Fire code.
Fire code. I don't think we go with the Southern Standard Builders Code anymore, I think that's probably been replaced with more modern codes than what we used to have on the books.
It's a little different.
It's a little bit different. Used to be, for a number of years, I saw that we acted on, it was the old Southern Standard Builders Code, for how they've been upgraded through years.
I move that we approve, do we want to do these individually, or both get?
I don't think it matters, as long as they're both approved.
I move that we approve orders 281 and 282, to bring us up to, for our codes inspector, the Southern Building Code and the International Fire Code.
My second motion.
Call in favor?
Ah.
Motion passed.
And Ms. Blue is going to start July the 1st?
She, right now, she's working with us on Saturdays, but she'll be, after she retires in June, then she'll be up here.
And you did put a note out on the water bills, didn't you, to that effect?
Had it in the paper, trying to get the word out.
I know we got Mr. Hedge over there, would like to address us sometime.
Going to speak now to Mr. Hedge?
Sure.
Boy, you're getting right over him.
And for y'all that don't know, Mr. Hedge is Executive Director of the Humphreys County Economic Development Council for the last 15-plus years.
Almost 16.
Almost 16.
Yeah. John Henry Hedge from Humphreys County. My dad was born in Bakerville, Tennessee, and he was a salesman, postmaster in Bakerville. And my dad taught school there, and then we left, and I grew up in East Nashville, but we always had a place in Humphreys County, so. But this has been a great, great job, a great run. I'm proud of the choices that you folks have to make. I was the county commissioner for 12 years, and chairman of our commission, and we was the county for five of those. It's not easy, and you just made some real hard choices, are beginning to make those hard, hard choices tonight, so I appreciate that. But Mayor, I appreciate your staff, and I appreciate the council members, really worked with the water sewer people on some projects we've worked here. It's not been, it's not been a real hot dog of a place to locate. We've had some ups and downs, but let me tell you what we've done. Precision Machine came back from New Johnson Bill and built their piece here. Volunteer Battles came in and they built their building, and now they have three. We purchased 15 additional acres of land in the industrial park. Of course, Aqua Glass was the big boo-boo of the whole deal. But since then, along with Dwayne, we went up and worked with Nashville Wire, and they purchased that building. they purchased that building. And now they occupy about fifty thousand square feet as a distribution center.
After we got dispensation from the state to allow them to down the...
And we've had, as you talked about tonight, the sewer treatment facility and what needs to be done or has to be done in this case, but I think there's opportunity here. The first time I looked at, or had a client look at the industrial park, it was grown up in trees. They were Japanese. We walked through the vines and through the trees, it just, it was not good to show. So I worked with, with the county and, and, uh, so we got that cleared. So it looks a lot better to keep it cut. And, uh, eventually, we will, we will get some folks here. And, uh, obviously, right now, we've got some, some hurdles we need to overcome, but as soon as that happens, I think, I think we'll see some progress. I, I showed a piece of the property just last week and, uh, which means that if they had taken the property, they would have had to been on septic until we got the project going with the sewer treatment facility. Overall, in the county, which whatever goes on in the county affects us all. Very proud of the fact of our college and process control technology course that we've added there. But over the past almost sixteen years, we've had investments of over, or hundreds of millions of dollars in the county, which resulted in hundreds and hundreds of jobs. They may not be here in the city limits of McEwen, but overall, it helps us, the people that passed through, the staff that live here and, uh, buy from your community. It's, I think, been a successful sixteen years. But I couldn't, you know, it's teamwork. Economic development is a team sport. And without the help of the councils and the cities, the county, all the different departments where this, the state of Tennessee economic development or mental Tennessee industrial development or TDEC or TDOT, TBA or CSX, it just takes a lot of teamwork to get these projects done. Been through three governors, seven state economic development commissioners, eight mayors, two and a quarter county executives, I said, because John Lee only served about six months. But, uh, it's been, I think, a successful time and we just need to keep on keeping on. And Vicki, I, I come up here about once or twice a year and we have to get our data sheets in order. And we do this every year, so I'd like to pass these out so everybody gets one. I'll give you these, you can have them.
Thank you.
But the data sheets are an indication of what, actually, what's, what's in the city of McEwen, but it also has the county statistics as well. We appreciate the support that, that you've given the Economic Development Council. We could not have done it without you. If I can ever be of any help or suggestions, feel free to call. Any questions that I might answer?
Mr. Hedges is retiring May first, so...
No, April third.
Okay. May first, we, uh, the council has taken on a scheduled to try and have a replacement named...
There you go.
By May first. So we'll, we're on schedule now, but let's say it can't be derailed.
That's right. But thanks to all of you and citizens of, uh, McEwen.
Thank you, Mr. Hedges. I'd like to thank you for all the work that he's done for the city and county and the other cities in the county and he is, uh, he's going to be hard to be, be replaced. He's got lots of contacts in Nashville and with various industries that we deal with, so, uh, he's always done a very professional job down there, so, thanks.
Next.
Hi. As most of you know, my name is Regina Markham Johnson and I'm here on behalf of, um, the water problem that we've had. Several citizens, you know, had deals over a thousand dollars. My mother was one of them. And I know unless the mayor cannot help that, that, um, he has a job today and he just can't, um, break down someone's bill or adjust it, and that's understandable. What I'm here for is I'm representing, um, possibly a solution to these hopeless problems that has, um, uh, the Tennessee Commission of Aging and Disability. There's thirteen counties involved with this, um, from, it originates in Nashville, it's federally governed, governed, and there's been a presidential disaster in which our area was, from all information, a disaster area over the snow and everything that we had, the weather, that, um, for right now, from what I'm understanding, they're only repairing bridges and roads. However, there is a program that you can go to if you're disabled and, um, this is called Tennessee Commission of Aging and Disability and the Disabled. Therefore, if, um, I have a number to, a direct number to Nashville, which, um, if anyone is interested, I would be happy, more than happy to help them with this. Um, the, um, the contributor of this is mostly from federal, federal grants. And, um, the contact person is Gary Scott. He is the one that's over, um, control of this. I have the phone number for it, that you, if you can't come to a decision where they cannot be adjusting the water bills. I know my mother only draws approximately, um, eight hundred thirty-three dollars a month. Back then, when, uh, the old days, you didn't take very many taxes out like, you know, today, so she doesn't really draw a lot of money. Therefore, I help her as much as I can by paying her in and helping her. And, uh, that's my choice. However, it's very hard for me to come up with a thousand dollars and I'm sure a lot of other people, um, my other friends has had, um, three hundred, four hundred, and normally they're forty-five dollars, but, uh, she had a break in her water, uh, line at the old house she lives in on Fifty May Street and, um, um, the, the mayor was very nice about getting someone from the, um, water department to come and turn it off because she didn't even realize it was running until we seen a flood in the backyard. So what I'm offering today is, um, I would like to be of any assistance to anyone that needs help, okay? If you're disabled, it doesn't matter if you're twenty-five years old, um, this, this service will help you and, um, I'd be happy to work with you in any way in giving people water bill space if that's hot, you know, if, if they need that. Uh, it's also a number for Social Security Disability, this is part of the governmental and, and, um, division that I'm representing on, on, uh, the rights. If you feel like you've been discriminated against or anything, then a person has a, a reason to call and say, "Hey, look, um, I know they have laws and our bills have to be paid, but possibly this program can set up payment arrangements so that their water will not be disconnected." And, um, if, if you would like my help, I would be happy to give you my phone number and assist y'all with just volunteer work and, um, be happy to help these people get their water bills paid. And, uh, if you would like, my number is nine three one two six four zero five five five. I can get you in contact with the head of the Aging and Disability Association, it's under the Tennessee Commission of, uh, Adults Whom Are Fifty or Older. If you had damages to your home, mold, anything, they will come and repair your, your homes for you for no charge. And, um, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I believe we've had approximately forty-four customers on the list, two sheets of paper that are affected by this. We got five that are very high.
Yes.
And, uh, you know, it's, it's, we've had two unusually cold winters here in McEwen. We've had ice storms and a lot of snows and it's caused, uh, it's definitely going to cause a, uh, financial hardship on, on anybody that's affected by it, but I've talked with some of the other, uh, cities and, uh, situations like this, the, uh, the cities try to help the, the customers when we have something like this to happen. It's not like it's a continuing water leak that they failed to repair on their own and just let run and run and run and didn't fix it. It's, it's a situation that they, they can't, you know, couldn't help certainly, but, uh, I think in this situation that we need to take a look at these forty-four customers that we have. I think all forty-four customers need to be treated the same and, uh, so, uh, I'm going to make a proposal to the board that we waive the sewer bill on each one of us inside the city that's on the sewer. And I believe that we should make an adjustment on the water bill itself of at least fifty percent off. And I think we need to work out a payment plan that's with the city on each customer that's going to be based on that customer's ability to pay over an extended period of time. And I think that's what we need to do to help the people here.
What are we talking about?
My association with health is...
Do what want?
What are we talking about? About fifteen dollars, twenty dollars a month or something like that? Additional to what the existing payment?
Ten, fifteen, twenty dollars a month, based on their ability to pay. Because we've got, uh, like in this situation here, Margaret's with a loan. She's not, you know, and we have other people that are single and... So we need to, uh, in this situation, uh, and then, you know, next year and the fall of the year, we need to send a reminder out on the water bills for everybody to check their pipes and make sure your vents of your house are closed and there's no cold air getting under the, the house and, uh, you know, kind of reminding the people to be looking out for this, but, uh, in, in this situation, I think, uh, you know, ten dollars to twenty dollars a month based on that individual's customer's ability to pay. And they can work that arrangement out with the city reporter. And I put that in form of a motion.
Have you sent, uh, the sewer? If, if they're on the sewer, would they just pay what they normally would pay on the sewer?
On the sewer was...
Not the, not the excess water?
But the, the normal...
What their normal, what their normal sewer rate was? Anything above that would be forgiven?
Would be forgiven.
Yeah.
Anything, anything caused by the leak on the sewer would be forgiven at a hundred percent, at, at the whole cost.
And then half of the, half of any dollars over their average...
Average bill.
Would be forgiven.
That's right.
And the other half would be, we'd work out some kind of payment plan that could be...
We'll, we'll work out a payment plan, uh, subject to the board's approval on each, with each one of the customers based on their ability to pay. We may have some that can pay thirty dollars a month or forty dollars a month. We may have some that can pay only ten dollars a month, but we will accept what we can to help the person.
And also, my, excuse me, I've been interrupting, but my, my, uh, the people that I know and work with and try to help people, they would be willing to pay some on it as well.
Yeah.
Okay, to get that lower down. I don't know about the sewer, what's the difference between the sewage and the water, but, uh, I know that my mother's bill was only forty-five dollars and where the water line broke was, uh, to the, the thing that goes down in the, the ground, the concrete over it, it was the main pipe leading to that. And, uh, all of that has been replaced. I paid for that to be replaced because the owners of the property could not afford it.
You, you make it in form of a motion?
Yes, in form of a motion.
Second.
Alan, please.
So the ones with no sewer, you're going to do like fifty percent off?
Be fit, on her situation, she's...
All the ones with no sewer?
Yeah, on the sewer, right, on the sewer, anything that's excess would be completely written off.
And the ones with no sewer?
Right.
That's what I'm saying, fifty percent off?
Right, fifty percent off. Then we'll work out the plan with the customer based on their ability to pay.
Anything above their, what an average bill, their normal bill was, fifty percent of that would be off?
I think, uh, that's more. I think these people that's been affected by this needs to come by and talk to Vicki and let them know how much each month they're going to pay towards that bill. And work it out with the bill and the bill and the...
What about those that've already coughed up the big money and paid their bill? Do they get a refund?
They get a credit or...
Yeah.
What about if you don't have city sewer and then your water bill's four thousand eighty-nine to four dollars? Is that a fine or by yourself?
What's, uh, well, it, it, you wouldn't be responsible for sewer anyway. What's your normal water bill? Forty bucks?
Thirty dollars.
So thirty dollars off that four thousand eighty, half of that, uh, what would that be? Four thousand fifty left, half of that would be forgiven. And then you'd be working out a payment plan of two thousand and twenty-five with Vicki for the remainder of stuff.
That's probably how it's going to be.
And if, if Margaret can work with the council, aging and disabled?
Does he have some questions? I don't understand the sewage part and the water part.
If the water didn't go into the sewer plant, we didn't use all the chemicals nor the electricity or anything else to run it through our sewage process, that's why. We knew it went out on the ground. It didn't, it didn't go through the sewer.
It didn't go through the sewer.
Right. But, but like hers, it broke like where it goes into the ground, uh, we take the concrete crack or whatever off. Would that be considered, um, the house's problem?
If it's past the meter, between the meter and the house, it's the owner's problem.
Okay.
Uh, from the, from the roadway or the main to the meter, it's our problem.
Well, this is had, this, I, I, I think it's like, right, I don't know, I'd have to ask the person that digs it, I'm not really sure.
Well, it'd have to be after the meter because the meter counted all those gallons that went out.
To the left of the meter, like maybe, um, one foot to the left?
It's the owner going over and looking at it.
I'm sorry?
It's, it's the owner.
And I appreciate it. I appreciate you going over there and helping her because we had no one here who's with me.
Okay. Anyone else?
Getting me, Mayor, Council, uh, I think this is probably about my fifth, fourth or fifth to McEwen regarding the, um, use of water tower as a source or access point to provide internet service, broadband internet service to the citizens of McEwen. As I shared with you in previous, uh, trips to McEwen, that's not the only access point that we actually have in McEwen. We do want to use that tower to extend or expand our signal and as I shared previously, uh, just in, um, in nineteen ninety-six, the, the government, the legislation passed a law that simply says any municipality-owned water tower, tower, uh, we have accessibility to. And then redefined that again earlier this year to identify water towers as a source that we can use. And what we want to do is basically provide broadband internet service, high-speed internet to the citizens of McEwen. And when you talk about economic development and you talk about bringing industry to an area, that's one of the things that they will be looking for is do they have access to internet? In fact, I met with a couple of, uh, your industries here this morning that we're going to be providing internet service for, uh, without access to your water tower. So, uh, our efforts, uh, is to continue to expand what we offer and the way of broadband internet service to the city of McEwen and its citizens. And what I'd ask you to do is do, as a, as the mayor and as a council, uh, if you would just... render a yay or a nay, that's all I'm asking you to do, is to say, yes, we support this because it's not about us, it's about our citizens, the constituents that you serve and that's what we wanna do, we wanna be able to serve them. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Well, I can, you can hear a yay from me, I support this, but we've also gotta get it through our counselor or so and...
And the engineer.
And the engineer.
About another structure being on the water tower. That has the mayor's concern, has Mike's concern too.
Yeah, and I can...
We have two towers there already and we don't need to be putting any more antennas on the, on the towers that are there and this project more likely require another tower to be put on the water tower. We need to find out from the engineering firm whether they would recommend that or not and then we need to get something back, we'll get from our city attorney about your proposal.
Okay.
I don't think there's anyone here that's in disagreement that that would not be good for the community to have that, you know, variable, but there's some issues here that we're gonna have to go through before we can sit here as a governing body and approve that.
I can tell you, in working with Barge for doing the same thing in Pond, and they have the same tower, they actually have structures on their tower that are not even working and we've worked with them, we just added onto their tower and we're working with them to take those structures that don't work off of their tower because, again, it's, for us, it's about doing the right thing and we're going to make sure from a structural standpoint, that's why our engineer worked with Barge, with the Barge engineer, because they also are the engineering firm for the Pond Sylvia Water District and we just put a, the same, did the same structure on their towers that we're proposing for McEwen. And as, as I stated earlier, any question as far as your legal counsel, we'll be more than happy to address any of those questions. I've not heard from your legal counsel, or I would have been more than happy to already address.
Perhaps we'll have some answers to both issues by the next week.
Let's try to make sure, if we can, schedule that, that we've got answers, if it's humanly possible, to, to get those answers.
And he can, and he can call me anytime or he can call and just as we discussed with you, we'll be more than happy to answer those questions regarding...
Barge Wyder did give you all good reference.
Yeah, and, and we, and we've worked with them. So the, the idea, because we're getting calls from the citizens of McEwen asking us when are we gonna be on that water tower because, again, it reaches where they are being and so I, I think that would just, you know...
What are you gonna have to do with it, Barge?
I'm gonna talk with Dana.
Yeah, Dana's, Dana's who we worked with on this one.
So you have Dana in contact?
Yes.
Maybe.
Did he send you an email?
Well, he was supposed to. This last, yeah.
All right, I'll come back again next month?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for your persistence.
My issue was with the water. I'm happy with the resolution that you all come up with, I just wanted to make sure my name got put on the list for the last two building titles.
Chief. I will take just a minute of your time. I, I don't have any, I don't have anything to pass out, I'll do my best to explain what I need, need you to hear and add leading some action tonight. First, I want to recognize Agent Proctor, you know, our relationship with the Drug Task Force has been and is good. You know, in the past few weeks, he made a, made a stop on I-40 and that stop resulted in a seizure of 20 kilos of cocaine with our K-19 team that we have out there, pretty substantial, one of the largest seizures they've had at their in a while from that interdiction unit. The street value of that is over $700,000, so it's pretty substantial, take, take off the product that we took off, off the road. So we're proud of that. What I've talked to you tonight is about that program. We recently approved this at our last meeting as a drug task force, the board actually approved it last night and that's why I don't have anything printed off this morning, it was short notice. We've been working for several weeks on changing the way that we participate in that program with the splitting of assets. We currently operate under, under a memorandum of understanding with them. This will have a few changes to it. This agreement, we still allow the city to withdraw from the program at any time, so we're not locking ourselves into any, any type of long-term agreement. I don't foresee that as being an issue, but we do have the, the opportunity to get out if we ever solve the need to. What I'm proposing, and they asked that the council give their approval tonight if possible, what I'm proposing is a new split on the assets. Currently, if our agent does not participate or is not the initiating officer on a stop, the city of McEwen is not recognized when the assets are disposed, dispersed, when assets are dispersed. This new agreement would, would change that so that we could receive any type of funds that were generated from the dispersal of assets if they were seized by another participating agency or had to rip an employee of the drug task force from the interdiction unit. What our end of that would be is we would start providing the vehicle and the fuel and also pay for the training. We would be required to start paying for the fuel immediately, the vehicle they'd given me until July, so in the new budget, that's something that could be worked out. We have funds in the drug fund, wouldn't require any tax dollars to purchase the vehicle or the, or the equipment to go in. I already actually have an extra radio to go in that unit, so we're not talking about any, any tax dollars to be spent on the program. I feel like it gives the city a better opportunity, it, it allows us to, what we're, what we're trying to create is more of a teamwork atmosphere out there so that all these guys can work together and, and everyone can be compensated for their expense because our city does have expense when we, when we are a secondary officer on the stop and this will compensate us for, for that, so that we're not, we're not spending it out of pocket. I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can about that.
So you recommend this?
Yes, sir.
And it's gonna be more beneficial to our man, our, our situation out there, that the, the split would more favor us with this, with this new proposal?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
We would have to pay fuel in the car, in the training, but that's probably vastly outweighed by just one stop.
Absolutely, yes, sir, yes, sir. The training, training expenses minimal, one or two glasses a year is what they normally participate in. You know, we provide training for everyone in the department already at mobile calls. All this, all of his training, all of his, the fuel expense, we would probably have to create a fuel line item in the new budget, you know, in the drug fund. All that, 100% of this could be paid for in, in the drug fund. And I do believe that in the long run, the city's in a better position with this agreement. It's something we've worked on for a while and it just got approved last night, so again, it's not something we did overnight, it's been in the works, but, but I was proud that it passed and it, it did pass unanimously, from what I understand. I like that it was gonna pass on the, but other than that, it was unanimous from what I understand, okay, so I do recommend it and I would appreciate it if we could decide tonight.
I would move that we enter into this revised agreement with the 23rd Judicial Drug Task Force based on, I don't know, we're gonna need to put these details in there, you may have to work with Vicki to put those details down...
Sure, sure.
That we would be responsible for, training, car and fuel.
Yes, sir.
But the split of any proceeds from the, from any busts would be per what, what you all have already agreed to.
If we can just pay, adopt that, we, we have a new memorandum of understanding that will be signed and General Crouch has signed it, that's all, if we can adopt, if we just move to, to add up to that one, compensate everything and I can provide a copy of that tomorrow, the signed copy. Those are the only changes in, in the agreement from what we are already doing.
In that case, I'll make it simpler. I move that we approve the new memorandum of understanding, the 23rd Judicial Drug Task Force is just recently approved.
You second?
Second.
Call a favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I'm here about my water bill, grant you mine, nothing like theirs to be, but mine is jumped considerably and, you know, I'm a disability, I get less than $800 of money and when you have a high electric bill, a high water bill, you know, where's the money for prescriptions that we have to have monthly? Where's the money for groceries? You know, I have just the basic bills, my house stuff, the water bill, electric, housing insurance that I have to have, car insurance that I have to have, life insurance that I have to have because if I don't have it, my kids won't even have anything to bury me with or cremate me with, is what I'm dealing with. And I, it's very hard. I have to borrow, well, shall I say, ask my parents for money every month just to get this paid and they're not giving me enough. My mom's definitely getting worse. She's been to numerous doctors, they don't know what's wrong and I don't know how we're gonna get it paid. I can help you with that. If you're disabled, I can help you with that, okay?
One other thing, the Drug Task Force, as we talked, those employees, City of McEwen are gonna stay on until July the 1st, Chief?
Yes, sir, they're, they're looking to make a change, but in any way they, they thought they were doing before then, from what I understand.
We thought it was only till May 1st?
Yes, sir.
But now it's gonna be pushed to July the 1st. For certain?
Yes, same deadline as the city of McEwen is on, so then I think we got...
So they will stay on the rolls, our insurance rolls until July 1st?
I know you've got something to say, but... Where you go? Anyone else have anything?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye. Here we go.
Have we, have we sent Ms. Jane up?